It is seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Please join me for the potential agents. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
We've got a motion by Eric.
I'll second.
Oh, I'll give that one to Joy, signify Joy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, community comment. During community comment, presenters are welcome to address the city council for up to five minutes on minutes not listed on tonight's meeting agenda. Specific requests for information may not immediately be available, in which case follow-up will occur with the presenter sometime after the meeting. The city council should not be expected to immediately act on requests. However, they will follow up accordingly and may schedule items for future consideration. If anyone here for community comments? Come on up. How are you doing?
Good.
Good. If you could sit down, make yourself at home, make sure the green light is on, and if you can introduce yourself and share your address, that'd be great.
Well, good evening, everybody. I am Scott Lowenthal, and I reside at eighteen eighty-five Mount Hope Road, just up on top. I'm your neighbor to the water treatment plant, which went real good. And my concern here is the speeding traffic on Mount Hope Road. I've been after this for quite some time, calling into the sheriff's department, actually talked to Lori about it already, and Courtney. Tonight, a black Tesla come through there probably fifty, fifty-five miles an hour. It's coming off of Chaska Boulevard. My concern is there's no miles per hour side until you go down by the cemetery, then it says thirty. So I've taken some drives around. Spring Creek Drive has a speed monitor by the mailboxes over there. It tells you how fast you're going. And I think Mount Hope Road should have one of those too. Concerns are tonight, families out for a walk, and eight out of ten people have a puppy in tow, plus the kids. Something's gonna happen, people, one of these days up there. I didn't get the license plate of that Tesla, but I just pointed down again, and people have flipped me off. It's sad. I moved to town here with Debbie Zelman, who is the owner of the house there, but we just love Carver, okay? So I wanna bring that attention to you. I think the water treatment plant adjacent to us would be a good place for that sign. It's not on anybody's property. It would be equal to the Spring Creek Drive situation. Spring Creek Drive has twenty mile an hour sides through the curves there in the new residential area. I think Mount Hope Road deserves at least a thirty coming off of Chaska Boulevard, because they're picking up the MPH to get home or wherever, but it's very concerning all winter long and again here this summer now, but hopefully something can be done and a squad car could park over there near city next adjacent to the cemetery and have a heyday, seriously. It's, I come from a small town of Play-Doh, and something did happen there years ago, and they have signs on the both sides of town, so. I'll leave it up to you, and I really appreciate open ears. That's where I'm at with it, but I don't need any rebuttal. I'm not gonna get all wound up on it, but it's something that, just give us the sign there maybe to slow it down a little bit, okay?
Sounds good. Appreciate you reaching out to me, Scotty. You have asked our deputies to monitor that area, so they're working on it.
Yeah, and you know, the policemen, the deputies have pulled in the driveway, "What do you got?" And I said, "Well, it's a speedy night again." They said, "We just can't be here," you know, and then that wasn't one of your, you have a city situation here where maybe one more could work it out, but.
Yeah, we're, that's a whole nother topic.
I know, I know. Yeah, so, but you could gather some money there, but hopefully we can crack it down a little bit or, you know, tell people somehow in the, your nice mailer too, to take it easy up there, but we love Carver, Debbie and I. I just wanna highlight that. It's been a very friendly area, national night out, so, okay?
Thanks, Scotty. Appreciate you sharing your concerns.
Brent, I have a question related to this. When we're talking about Spring Creek, are you talking about, is there a electronic sign going through Spring Creek, and where is it? Because I can't picture that in my head.
There's a digital speed sign for eastbound traffic, I would say. Is it Birch that goes north and south, or Mulberry? Birch, about three-fourths of the way down for eastbound traffic as you leave this original Spring Creek neighborhood. So that sign was purchased maybe five years ago. It originally started on the north side or going eastbound on Fourth Street West, and then we moved it over to Main Street West, and then we moved it over to Ironwood Drive going westbound toward the school, and then I would say about a year ago, we moved it to Spring Creek Drive.
Okay, so is the intent to keep moving that around?
I would say there's probably an opportunity there are, you know, based on not just Scott's. And so there have been a number of folks that have, I mean, I would anecdotally, speed is the number one thing that folks are talking about, speed and stop signs, and I think as we all know, it's, you have to catch them, right? And so it's part of like enforcement, and it's part signage. I think there's an element of security that folks find in those digital speed signs, so I guess I would offer, I think we were in line to get some public safety funding from the state, from this legislative session that we as a staff come up with maybe a more comprehensive plan and say, "Okay, these are the areas that we're gonna target, if you will, for digital speed signs." And so, because I think without, I would say, an overall plan, you know, if we just move it to Mount Hope, the folks that are in Spring Creek are gonna be upset, and I think we also need to have some type of strategy, because I would, if we could put up a digital speed sign on every street in the city, I think folks would be fine with that. But I think when you talk about, there's a common theme of the roads that I already mentioned, you know, Mount Hope, Spring Creek, Ironwood are all, what would I call, Carver kind of collector-type roads, and so maybe if we could start, kind of similar to like the Petway Station, we develop a kind of a pilot program and say, "Okay, we're gonna start with these three or four locations," you know, and, you know, these signs are a lot more than a Petway Station. I know they're three thousand dollars maybe here. Their Petway Station is like fi- three to five hundred dollars, so it, in any event, they're gonna be, they're typically solar-powered, which is a benefit. I mean, you can get ones that are hardwired, but they're quite a bit more, but long story short, we can do some analysis in the interim. I can work with Chad to see if we have just a, maybe a speed sign, just a regular speed sign in the interim, and then if we're able to get a digital component with a larger citywide plan, maybe that's what we can do long-term, but short-term, just adding a thirty mile per hour speed sign right on the water treatment plant property for southbound traffic. Actually, it would be both directions probably, because that would be northbound traffic on the water treatment plant side.
Yeah, you're going down the hill. They're coming in off Chaska Boulevard, picking up that max speed. And let it be known by Wabels and Hammers across the street, you know, we got a couple dipsy-doodles there. It doesn't seem to bother the people. So my concern is coming off of Chaska Boulevard, you don't see thirty MPH until you're going down past the cemetery.
Yeah, so we can.
We need another, I don't know who resides next to Randy and Steph Wabel over there, but that would be immediately.
Sure.
That would give some teeth, pardon me, for law enforcement. Did you see that sign, you know? Gotta have a sign there, I think, otherwise.
Yep, so we can do that, and then this sparked another thing. The, Chad and his team have been working, Aaron Schmitz helped out too. There's I should know his name now, but the property owner escapes, but he lives right, Randy Chemnitz has some evergreen trees, and we've worked out an arrangement with him to kind of create a better site triangle at that intersection. If you get to Spring Creek and Mount Hope Road and you look south, sometimes it can be hard to see cars coming from town, if you will, going towards Chaska Boulevard, so there's gonna be a tree trimming exercise probably in the next month or so. That'll help things there. Because, I think, Scott, you're right, there's that combination of speed and then maybe obstruction is, you know, and that's a it's a pretty heavily traveled pedestrian way to get from Lions Park and that trail system into the Spring Creek system, so some good input, and we can take.
Appreciate it. Great crowd out there tonight, and that's what makes Carver so nice, you know, we enjoy where we're at, but we need a little protection.
We gotta make it safe for those folks wanting firewood too, so.
You caught me.
Bye-bye from you.
Good, good.
Thanks, Scott.
That's, it's been so nice, but I have seen the basketball dribble out of a driveway, and, you know, that's when it first started, six, seven months ago, and I'm just eyes on, so. Thank you, everybody.
Yep, thanks, Scotty. Good night. Appreciate coming.
Got it.
Anybody else for community comment? All right, then moving on to presentations and reports, item five point one is the certified levy project update. Mr. Hubner, welcome back from Duluth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff. It's good to be back, although that was some nice air conditioning up there.
It was twenty degrees cooler off last week than it was here.
It was beautiful. So Carver's gonna, or, Carver, Aaron Schmidt here, Assistant City Engineer of Carver, is gonna.
Do you want to start all over again?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Scott. How are you?
I'm doing fantastic, Mayor, City Council and staff. Tonight, we're here to tell you, give you an update on our Carver Levy Project. We've had some significant changes in funding since the last time we met, and just to give you a little background on where we're at, we're still currently hit the next one there. There we go. We're gonna give you updates on a number of things tonight. Funding update, project delivery, and work plan updates, communication, and then some next steps. So the first one is, really just wanna reiterate that the levy project is being undertaken to correct a number of deficiencies in the existing levy, try to get it enrolled back in the Army Corps of Engineers voluntary levy program, as well as get it certified by FEMA. Both of those things protect the residents and the property owners in the city of Carver from losses and damages, and then also if there are damages in the future, that the Army Corps would come in and pay eighty percent of any future issues associated with flooding. We have about fifty-five properties behind the levy, and currently there are lots of limitations on redeveloping those properties, property improvements, and then also the restrictions and needs for purchasing flood insurance, which is not an inexpensive effort for individuals. So I'll give you an update on some key fact, key things here. March twenty twenty-one, we received three hundred thousand dollars in funding from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. That was a hundred and fifty thousand from them and a hundred and fifty from the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District. In July twenty twenty-two, we received notification of two and a half million in federal funding assistance, and we have a fully executed agreement on that, and we're probably eighty percent of the way through our environmental reporting on those federal funds, so we're hoping to still stay on track for September completion on the environmental review, which really hinders what we can and cannot do until that is approved. We received notification of the six million dollars in bonding from the state bonding bill this year. Actually, I think we got, is this the one that got general, just general funds, I think?
Yeah, mine have, yes.
So we may have fewer restrictions.
File six, six, nine is what I remember.
Yes, and I believe this was taken from the general fund, so we'll, as soon as we see the agreement, we haven't had that tonight. We were hoping to have a resolution for your consideration. We just got the actual file number today, and we should see the agreement shortly. Just going on a little bit, so now we have eight point eight million in funding. Third Street Bridge Project also was funded with this bonding application, so Third Street will come back with another update, or actually, Aaron will give you an update on that project schedule here shortly. So we'll have a number of things going on together, along with the Merriam Trail Project. So there's, there's going to be some activity, and we're gonna try to talk about scheduling, how we minimize impacts to downtown Carver here as we move forward in construction, and we'll get more details on that as that progresses. We have a pursuit for an additional four million dollar request into the federal Community Project Fund Grant Program that went in in the spring, and then we just requested another three point three five million from the Minnesota Capitol Budget Request, and that went in two weeks ago, or three weeks ago. So the local, just to give you an update on the local match obligations, when we started this project in, wait, I wanna go back to twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen? It's gotta be back in that timeframe when we first, yeah, started this. We knew it was gonna be a marathon and not a sprint.
Thank you.
The, the local contribution from the city of Carver towards the Minnesota DNR's Flood Mitigation Grant Program was two point two million dollars. We had a census update since then in twenty twenty-two, and that local obligation went from two point two to three point five million. We have actually met our local contributions of the three point five million, and the way that we do that is it's any contribution from outside the state of Minnesota, so the two and a half million dollars from the federal grant funding is acceptable as that local match. We had the hundred and fifty thousand from the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District, and eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city of Carver. Fifty thousand was cash towards our preliminary concept plan, and then eight hundred thousand dollars was in lift station improvements that you already had completed that the DNR agreed are acceptable expenditures toward this project. So therefore, there are no additional funds required from the city of Carver at this time to complete the project. I'll leave that to Aaron to, so I wanted to run through the funding breakdown, just to make sure we all understand what's happening. So the cost estimates, currently, we have broken the levy into three different segments. We have a west segment, so that's west of Spring Creek, and that's about two point eight million. The east of Spring Creek segment is about three million, and then both sides of Spring Creek through the downtown areas is about six point three million. And then previous lift station and storm sewer costs in downtown Carver were eight hundred and fifty thousand. That gives us a total project cost of thirteen million dollars. Now, that is an increase of a million from the last time we were here, and part of that increase is to account for that eight hundred and fifty you already spent, because our previous estimates did not include those dollars in them. So we wanted to make sure that we accounted for those in the total project cost, and in addition, there is some inflation area since the last time we updated the numbers. So where we are today is the DNR has contributed six million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The eligible local match items from the city of Carver and other funding partners are the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District, the federal grants, and then the previous city of Carver lift station and cash contributions. That gets us to three point, gets us to our total of shy gap that remains of three point three five million dollars, so. And for that three point three million, we have a request in for four million from the feds and three point three five from the state of Minnesota, so if we receive a combination of any of those funds, we should hopefully be able to close the gap, and as I'd mentioned previously, once the DNR starts a project, they try to fund it to completion before they move on to the next project, so we are in a very good position with the six million allocated to Carver this year. And I'm also in conversations to see if there is additional money available, as there may be some of the other funds that were allocated that are currently not planned for existing communities, so they might be able to slide some more money towards the city of Carver, but I'll let you know if that happens.
Okay, so I get to talk about all the fun stuff now, so how are we gonna, how are we gonna make this project happen? So lots of things have already happened, as Todd's alluded to, but now that we have this funding to work with, it's really starting to make us think about, how do we bring this project to a reality? So as Todd mentioned, we're working with the DNR right now to execute the grant agreement. Just got that paperwork here very recently, so hoping to bring that back in either the July meeting or August meeting to kind of bring that final grant agreement, final resolution to execute that with the state, so that'll be one of the first things you'll see. We're currently working on the environmental reviews, so the environmental assessment that's required for the federal grant funds, so that's in progress right now. We should be bringing that to a close here by September is our goal, so that's, that's really key. After you get through the environmental reviews, is when you can start doing other things with that money. Number one, you can start requesting reimbursement, so right now, until the EA is done, we can't actually receive those funds. So that's really a critical path right now, is to get to the point where we can actually start being reimbursed by the federal grant program for the work that's being done. So after that happens, we'll be able to start spending the, spending the funding. Summer of twenty twenty-three, so public engagement is something that we kind of haven't done too much of lately. Now that there's funding again and the project has legs, we wanna get the excitement going again with, with the city in general, with the, with the community, so the efforts for this, the summer are really gonna be informing the, the community again about the project, get the excitement going, so I'll be talking about that a little bit more in a bit, but how we're gonna do that. And then next is design, so really honing in on construction limits. That will help us establish what easements will be needed for the project. So getting through the preliminary design phase into final design is really gonna be the technical engineering part of it that'll be happening over the next many months. And we're targeting by fall of twenty twenty-three, so in, in the next several months, we'd have those construction limits locked down, so we can start looking at any appraisals for property values where easements would be needed, and then looking at that actual easement acquisition process throughout the winter and spring months, this coming winter and spring. So as that's going, we'll be continuing with final design and construction documents over the next, this next winter, and then the goal is by, by next summer, we could actually have a project that we could have bid documents ready for either a Phase One construction project, depending on if no other funding is received in this next, in these next pursuits that we talked about, or if we would receive additional funds, we could possibly bid the whole entire project by next year, so.
Brent?
Aaron, would you mind, I don't think we have it in there, but just share with the council as it relates to the schedule, your coordination efforts with Scott County on the Merriam Junction Trail, just because these projects could end up kind of being side by side, literally and figuratively, so.
Yeah, for sure. Yep, so we've, we've worked very closely with the Scott County Merriam Junction Trail Project. They're actually kind of going through a very similar track right now. They're in the, the heat of their environmental review processes. They're working on final design as, as we speak also, so they, their thought is they could possibly have a project that'd be ready, shovel-ready and bid by next spring, so, and possibly a tree clearing contract as early as this winter. So depending on some of the, some of the endangered species items and with like bats and such, you can't clear trees during certain times of the year, so they're suspecting that that's gonna be the case in which they look at clearing trees even this winter yet, so. That's all best-case scenario, I'd say, but they are, they're planning on moving that project full steam ahead, per se, so. But yeah, we're, we're working with them closely. The, the bridge will touchdown on our levy itself, so coordinating literally the X, Y, and Z of where that touchdown is gonna be, you know, horizontally and vertically on the levy is a big point to get right, so we're working with them on that. We've had discussions with the Army Corps of Engineers about what's gonna be allowed for that bridge abutment and that kind of stuff, so that's all stuff that's in motion now, and we're continuing to advance that, so with that being said, as Brent alluded to, that piece of the main river levy, I'll say east of Spring Creek, so from the pedestrian bridge at Spring Creek east up to Casey's, that'd probably be a logical Phase One project area if we were to chunk it up, just because it would complement the schedule of the trail project, the trail crossing, so. And then, you know, phasing or staging and such could kind of complement each other in that area too, so. Lots of moving pieces, but those discussions are being had actively, so. Any other questions on that?
Questions?
Otherwise, yeah, I, I'll get into other topics, but any, any, any scheduled questions, I should say.
Any questions on the schedule?
Are you gonna go over it later? What does Phase One mean?
So Phase One, I'm just referring to that as a Phase One construction project, so if we were to phase it into multiple pieces.
Because of the funding timing?
Yep, purely because of funding, so if we, we had all the funding, if we were to get the four million from CPF, there's gonna be one project, so.
Got it, okay, okay, thank you.
So ideally, that's, that's the case.
What does that mean? We can scale this up or scale this down based on?
Oh, for sure, and I remember when we went through it, it was very modular, is not the right word I'm looking for, but you know, it can be phased. But I just wondered if we knew what that definition is, but if you're saying it's really related to the funding piece of it, I get it.
Build as much as we have money for.
Yeah, we'll scale it up and down as we, yeah, for sure.
Yes, thank you, okay.
Okay, well, then I'll get into engagement, so this is something that I'm working with Nicole Crowsey on, so she's, she put a lot of time into thinking about engagement for the summer. We're, like I said, we're keeping it very informational right now. We're not really requesting input on like design components at this time. It's more of informing the, the community of this project is real again, you know, we're, we're moving forward with these things, so really getting the excitement up again with, with the project, so, but we're gonna do that with a few things. Sidewalk stickers and signage along the corridor, so I have some pictures of what that would look like, but basically just being able to snap a picture with a QR code and bringing you to the project page to learn more about what this project is all about. Sandwich board in City Hall, wanna put one downstairs, obviously getting the website updated and keeping that up to date with real-time updates. Press release already happened for the, for the funding, but, you know, some, some updates on social media as well, so really educational in nature is what we're targeting. Then when we get into the fall and winter, there's gonna be more resident engagement, one-on-one, when we have to talk to them about specific, you know, construction limit issues, questions like that, and then getting into the land acquisition piece of it, so that will be firing up, but it won't be for a little bit yet.
And one of the things we'll have to do there is we'd like to get on the work session schedule at some point to start keeping you informed of what we're looking at for easements and property acquisitions, so you're aware of what the limits are and give us some direction on on where we're headed and the options that are available for some of these pieces.
Yep, and then lastly, stakeholder engagement. We've already, we started having meetings again with key stakeholders like the DNR, Army Corps, Scott County with the trail project, Carver County Parks, so those discussions are, are gonna be resuming again and really bringing them along the whole way, so you can work through issues together, you know, in tandem as you move through the design process, so. So here's just a couple of the examples, so the one on the left is the sticker that would go on the sidewalks, and then the one on the right would be just the, the boards that we could put up along the levy system at key locations, you know, maybe in, in Depot Park and and Tugboat Park, that, that, that sort of stuff. So that's just an example of what those would look like. You can see the QR code there. And the picture on the right here is just a sandwich board that we plan to put down in, in City Hall, so. That's kind of the engagement piece in a nutshell for really getting things going here again in, in the summer. So as far as next step, starting the engagement, continuing to pursue the funding plan, project design and easements, getting, getting the construction limits and easements honed in on here over the next six months, and then continuing with our, our agency partners and, and working through the, the design process together, so. That was a lot of information, but we'd be happy to, to talk through any, any of those items in more detail right now, so.
Questions, comments?
Have any questions?
Only, only a comment that what, I love that there's already the plan about the communication and engaging the community, but any tree clearing, even if we have to communicate it early and often, just so that it comes from, you know, all of us or, you know, the different agencies, because sometimes just perception or if, if that just gets too much attention from a different source.
Yeah, we, we plan on coming forward with a tree clearing plan and having those conversations. There will be a significant number of trees. There will be a significant number of trees removed as part of this project, and that's the message we want to send. At some point, we we may even go and mark them so folks can just know which ones are coming out. And we really don't have a choice in the ones that we're taking. They're required not to be in a levy envelope, that's not an optional thing that we can do or allow. We can plant in other locations if we're talking with some of the residents outside of our project. If we decide or the city decides that's a mitigation measure, we can certainly have those conversations. But we'll come back with a plan and we'll show you what trees are being taken. At some point, it'd be good to to walk the levy and show the whole impacts and some representative sketches of what its finished product will look like. So we've already flown it with the drone and at some point we'll have a rendition of of what it looks like. And we'll come back with options before we do that, so the council can weigh in on that and look at what type of stakeholder input you'd like on that process as well. We're actually having an internal design threat here in the next couple of weeks, just to clear up what we've done, look at some of the options and how it fits and with the Third Street Bridge now of being reconstructed, how that fits into the to the levy and making sure that all the pieces come together and the timing works out well for everything. We want to minimize the impacts of downtown as much as we can. I would say that in the Merriam project, we are discussing their access routes and we're trying to keep them out of downtown. Mainly trying to get them to run on the levy from Depot Park down towards Riverside Park. And then, because they'll have to have a significant effort on this side for driving piles and siding, bridge piers and those types of things in the river, so there's going to be a big disturbance there and a lot of trucks hauling in and out. We want to make sure they stay off of our main roads or try to.
We've also asked them, related to Councilmember Sarah's question for a community engagement plan, recognizing that we won't be driving the bus, if you will, on that. But also recognizing that we can't tell our residents, it won't suffice to say, well, that's not our project. So we want to take a leadership role and say, we need to be kind of arm-in-arm with you with your engagement plan so that we can navigate issues as they come up from both sides of the river.
No, thank you for the response.
I don't have any questions, we're going to have a lot of discussion in the upcoming months and years. This is a huge win for the community and I'm just thankful for everyone who's been a part of this.
I think everybody in this room potentially knows how excited I am about this. I appreciate you guys, all the work you're doing, because you're right, there are a ton of moving pieces with this. And it makes my head hurt a little bit to think about the coordination with Scott County and the bridge project and the property owners and all that kind of good stuff. I am thrilled to hear that we're finally getting to that part of the process where we'll have shovels in the ground. And I think we all know up here that construction is hard and painful and long. But I think this is going to be a really good project when it is done. I also think that that communications piece is so important because we've been talking about money for a long time and have shared, oh, we've received this grant, we've received this grant. And it's still going to be probably what, fourteen months before we have shovels in the ground at the earliest? So I think it's important to keep kind of pushing that message out there, making sure that folks know what's going on. You mentioned that flood insurance is so expensive. And while you were at the beginning of your presentation, I was looking up, it was in the packet this week, how much we spent on flood insurance for the city-owned property that's in the flood plain Church by the River. And we spent three thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eight cents. So that doesn't buy us anything other than protection from floods, so when I say it's irritable and expensive.
An aerial for you?
I believe so. We're talking about four grand, thirty-eight hundred bucks, so. Thank you for all your work, appreciate you guys coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we don't have any public hearings this evening, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We have a motion by Councilmember Sarah.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Hirschman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, moving on to business items, Sixth Street West to Hawthorne Ridge Trail Connection.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, tonight, we are looking for approval of a contract for a trail connection in the city of Carver. So as we all know, Sixth Street is looking great after its reconstruction. We've identified a trail section, it's on the screen right now, circled in red. This is our current trail map, so if you've been around town lately and you've seen our new trail signs, if you scan that QR code, it takes you to this map, which hopefully helps introduce you some to to some new trails in Carver. But general location of the project we're looking at tonight is in that red circle. And a plan sheet that Bolton and Mink put together. So Sixth Street, you might be asking, why are we looking at this separately from the project? So Sixth Sixth Street was reconstructed using state aid funding. And this portion of trail was not eligible for those dollars based on the rustic nature of the trail. Frankly, the topography, so going into the site is pretty steep, but consistent with the trail system that we have in Hawthorne Ridge, so not dissimilar to the trail system we have there. But largely a connection that we're missing at this point. We anticipated this project as part of the overall Sixth Street projects, there are budgeted funds in the overall city project budget for the trail connection. So some photos, we were proactive on our approach for the connection to Sixth Street, it's lagging a little bit, it's coming. But if you have noticed on Sixth Street, there's a trail to nowhere right now, spanning from Lislewood Parkway down to can you, I got kicked off the internet again, this happens fairly frequently, one second. Okay, so on the screen now, the path to nowhere essentially, so you'll see that we have the trail infrastructure to get into this portion of the trail that we currently couldn't construct using state eight dollars. So this is Lislewood Parkway standing at the corner, so Carver Ridge is in this area looking towards downtown. At the same area, you'll see where the pavement ends for the trail, that's where the trail would hook into the system, into the Hawthorne Ridge site. And then the view of us, the trail going up behind the retaining wall, so the general area where the trail would connect into the bigger system. So again, the plan sheet, some pictures so you can get an idea of where we're looking. And again, tonight, the request is to approve a contract for roughly sixty thousand dollars, fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for trail construction from Sixth Street into the Hawthorne Ridge system. Questions?
Any questions?
No. Is it a gravel or? So Ms. Smith, it's not paved, it's just continues.
Correct.
Lines up with the other trail that's gravel.
Right.
Eric? I don't have any questions, I think this is great and much needed and trail connections are always a good thing.
We can check one thing off our strategic plan, it's a trail connection.
There we go.
We can in just a minute, so I'll make.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'll make a motion to abort and approve a contract with JD Construction in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for the extension of the trail from Sixth Street to the Hawthorne Ridge Trail System.
Got a motion by Councilmember Mock?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember McKnight, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes, all right, thank you. Aaron, let's go back to the item from the planning or from the the work session, the zoning ordinance update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so just a quick refresh for anyone who's joining the meeting now. During the work session that we held this evening, starting at five-thirty, we discussed the Planning Commission's work on the zoning code update, so some work that the Planning Commission has done. I've gotten their general feedback on some significant changes we would be changing in the zoning code and looking for just a general council thumbs up, thumbs down, don't touch it. I'm not asking you to make a decision tonight, just because the Planning Commission will do some of the drafting to bring you a more finished project than where we're at right now. But I don't want to invest staff time, Planning Commission time on things that you feel are futile and something that you wouldn't be able to support at a city council level. So during the presentation, we talked a little bit about lot standards, zone regulations, straight zoning versus PRDs and then accessory dwelling units. So I'm going to go back and take those one by one, just so we don't open it up for a full discussion that could get pretty jumpy around. So the first step is thinking about our zoning districts. So on the screen right now, we have our typical R1 and R2 districts for Carver, Chanhasen, Chesapeake, Victoria, Waconia. Something that's interesting, I would say, is that we are zoning most frequently to our R2 district, but that often comes with a PRD. So a planned residential development or a deviation from our standard zoning code. The deviations that we've been seeing for the past several years are taking the minimum lot size from seven thousand and plummeting them to roughly twenty-five hundred usually, so the villa product, which is in Oak Tree, Meadows at Spring Creek, Brookview, River Bluff Estates. So that's a thing that we're doing pretty commonly, so what does that mean for our zoning district? Should the R2 zoning district plunge really low for our lot size, so we don't have to do a PRD to get to that number? When we obviously feel comfortable rezoning to that anyways with a PRD. And then the seven and a half side yard setback, we've been doing that same thing going down to five, which has been common in those same projects. So Meadows, Brookview, Oak Tree and River Bluff Estates all have that villa product that have requested that side yard setback reduce from seven and a half to five. I wouldn't say we're dissimilar by any means, I think a lot of cities are seeing that same product, that villa market, which Dave will probably roll his eyes that that's not like a real term necessarily. But it's the detached townhome, so typically an HOA maintained lot that is smaller, smaller setback, smaller footprint can mean more affordable, but often these villas are definitely have some higher-end touches hitting a different market, usually an empty nester that is looking to downsize a little bit. So looking for some general feedback about square footage of our lot sizes and our side yard setback. I will say, I meet with other community development directors pretty regularly with these groups and it's something we're all grappling with, I'd say we're furthest along in the process. So we might look kind of radical if we're first, but I don't think we would be the last to make some of these changes just because we're inherently rezoning these properties exactly the same with the PRD process, instead of just saying this is our R2 district where you could develop at those same levels. So looking for some general feedback, again, no decision to be made tonight, but just general feedback that can help guide the Planning Commission work.
Just clarifying one more time for, because this slide, because there's no titles on these.
Yeah.
So the second one is the proposed, the bottom one?
Nope, so the top is R1.
R1.
That's our low-density residential district and then R2 is the second one.
R2 is the second, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then going from left to right, it goes, minimum lot size, minimum lot width, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback.
This is what's in the code, but when we put in the PRD, it can kind of be whatever.
Correct.
So I think I'm fine with that. What really made it clear for me was that map that you demonstrated the use of PRDs in Carver and we're using them. I have ventured a guess, in absolutely the majority of the developments that I've approved since I've been sitting in this seat, since I've been sitting up here. And almost, almost all of them, so it does seem silly to put a PRD for everything when it looks like we should take a closer look at what the restrictions are and what the market is wanting for these residential districts. It surprises me that we're living in a world where we're talking about homes that are five feet apart from each other, ten feet apart from one another, that's not something that I would necessarily enjoy. But it's selling and it's selling well in Carver and for different life phases, for different reasons, folks are really enjoying it and there aren't blocks and blocks of vacant villas in the city of Carver. So I would say, take a closer look at what the market is driving for these, instead of throwing out a PRD to all of the zoning areas.
There would, so I'm I'm fully in favor of simplifying, right, and not doing so many PRDs or really making sure why we're doing PRDs, right? Want to get something out of it, like you mentioned, that's probably, I'm probably going to your second bullet, I'm all for that, too.
That's okay, they're very similar.
But just to kind of put it in context, it's still an R2 district, so there's still a density limitation, right? So even if we were to plunge these numbers for the square footage of lot, there's still a limitation of density that the developer could put in that R2, right? So there there still are some walls around this, it's just we're, I think, allowing a little bit more simplicity and not requiring, trying to get to a stage where we don't require a PRD for everything, we're not having unique districts, zoning districts for everything and just getting some more commonality, right?
Can I get a little clarification on what you're seeing? So you're in from Aaron, too, so you're seeing that although we may, let's say we shrink it down to this much, you're seeing there's still.
The minimum lot size, there's still a density, right, maximum that can only be done in the R2, right?
So for our comp plan, we have the density requirements, that's kind of the guardrails for each district. So hitting that R2, which would be the medium density, would be typically five to twelve units per acre. So you have to think like netting out certain portions of a project. So like Brookview felt like a really big property that we were developing, but you net out that entire bluff area, the street area. So the actual developable land is not overly large, so the density wouldn't support sixty units on that project because the developable land is so low. So we would still always need to fall within those guidelines of our comp plan.
Yeah, just something to kind of keep in mind, so I'm I support trying to simplify this.
I have a question. Okay, so in a PRD, doesn't that give the city the ability to negotiate for something we need or desire from the developer? And would we lose, do we lose that if we just go to straight? You know, what's the balance there?
So yes, a PRD does allow you to negotiate. Our city code currently doesn't support that very strongly right now, so I don't have anything in our PRD section that says to get a PRD, there needs to be some win for the city necessarily. I'll also say, in our zoning code, we could inherently increase language about buffering. So you wouldn't have to have a PRD, but we could have language that says for a rezoning project, you need to have some buffering technique, whether that be a landscape burn, a fence, landscape, trees, et cetera. So yes, in a PRD, you do have that negotiation, but we also have the ability to have a more robust residential section of our city code that would get us some of those, what I would call wins, just inherently in our redevelopment process.
All right.
So I want to talk a little bit more about this development in the past fifteen years and the PRD. So I know that Mayor Johnson noted that, you know, they're selling, that's what we, but is it this little chicken and the egg here? Because that's all we have on the market, are homes that are that close together? That's all the people are going to have available to purchase. So I have, I mean, I hear from people who, you know, have bought homes up there, well, I mean, it's close to the neighbors, but what's out here, it's what we can buy, there isn't anything else really on the market. We know that there's a shortage of housing stock and new houses, but also Carver is cheaper. And then, let's say Chanhasen might be or something like that. So I feel uncomfortable with the fact that these houses, and to me, this is very technical, are looking like they're getting smashed in there. And when we say that we are looking at these and then, well, are, is the developer, we're saying, well, this is what the developer wants, what does Carver want? I don't, the developers are going to come because the land is here and people are going to buy homes. What does Carver want to look like? Do we want to look like we have homes stacked on top of each other where you can reach out and touch your neighbor at any time? When I look back through the developments here, the most of the ones that are before PRD, now even the bluffs, I was surprised to see that one was a PRD. And obviously, there's some differences in how those PRDs get worked out. But most of our new development is coming in and the Met Council's requiring three per acre, correct? And so where where do we stand right now with our density levels as a general whole for the city? We're above three per acre.
Right.
Do you know what that number is offhand?
I would say a hair above three.
Because last time I thought, I'd heard it was maybe like even three and a half, three-six.
I'd say that feels a little high.
A little high, no, okay. Again, when when we're debating, and this has been something that I've always wondered, why are we, why are we having these coming as PRDs? Why are we letting these come in PRDs? What, when a development comes to you, just to help with my understanding? What, when a developer comes to you, just to help with my understanding, where do we, rather than just saying, this is zoned, this, we say, okay, now we can, we'll look at a PRD. What triggers you to even say, yes, let's look at a PRD?
I wouldn't say that I say yes. They come in for preliminary plot, and it's a decision that the planning commission and city council make. So you could look at it and say, we're not interested in doing a PRD at this point. Historically, looking at our track record, we approve PRDs. So if a, if a developer comes in and says, is your city council favorable to them? Our answer is yes, because historically you have been. And I just want to make note, I hear what you're saying, but the lot sizes are minimums. So it doesn't mean someone could not come in and put in a 7,000 square foot lot, if that's what the market is asking for, if that, if that's the project that they want. It's just lowering it so we don't have to do a PRD for some of these projects we're already seeing. So it doesn't pigeonhole to say, you can't go above this number. You need to fit the density requirement, so you need to be within those guardrails. But then within that, it's just the minimum that's changing. We're not putting a maximum on them at all.
But the, to, when I'm looking at developers, because they're there to make money. They, they want to get in, make their money, get out. So when we're looking at that, although it says, you know, that's, it's just a minimum, which is correct, it is just a minimum, they're gonna go as minimum as they can, because the more they can pack in, the more money they're going to make. So, I, I just, I have a problem with looking at these setbacks that are five feet. That is, that is hard for me. I can't, I can't look at Carver in the future and say, well, we allowed this because the housing market was tight, and the developers were making beaucoup bucks off of it, and it's what they wanted. Again, I want to look at, what does Carver want to look like? What, do we want houses that are that close together, up in, in all of our neighborhoods coming in? It works now because that's all that's on the market.
We have five-foot setbacks though, sidewalks?
For some, right?
Like Timber Creek, all of their minimums are seven and a half throughout the single-family. Preserve is seven and a half. Both DR projects, so Meridian and Hawthorne, were seven and a half, so.
Do we have a villa that's five feet? Have we gone that?
Yep, Brookview, Meadows at Spring Creek, Oak Tree, River Bluff Estates.
Okay. Yeah, five, it's really small, and it's a small area, and I'm really not in favor of going smaller for those side setbacks. Couple other things I want to mention, when we're looking at the detached accessory units.
Can we pause on that one?
You want to go back to that? That's perfectly fine, okay. So, I think, I appreciate looking at this and trying to simplify things and making things better, but again, I don't want to be driven by what the developer wants here in Carver. I want to be driven by what Carver wants, and what our needs are going to be, and not letting them dictate that our houses are on top of each other. I'll stop for right now. I'm sure everyone else has a few comments.
Eric?
So, I think the market is really gonna drive that, more than we are. When interest rates come down in five or six years, developers may decide they want another large neighborhood with large houses and yards. I, I think we need to make it attractive for developers to build what the market is demanding now, and I think we need more lifecycle housing. I absolutely get Christie's concern. You know, the, I'm just a believer in, in the market dictating. The market will go to larger properties and larger houses as we expand west and north, and we have more developable land. I think that'll come naturally when, when the market is ready for it. So I'm, I'm okay with, with the reduction in the setback size.
I'd like to respond to it, Eric, really quick. So when you say that it's market-driven, and that as the interest rates drop, and we get to a point where it's a little bit more manageable, that they're going to look at this, I mean, your viewpoint is that you're going to look at this and say, well, I'm allowed to put more units in to make more money, but I'm just not going to do that now because the markets change? I don't see that as happening.
I disagree. I think that there will be, there may be a demand for another Carver bluff in the future, but there isn't today, and I don't think there is in, in most communities today. And we also need to have more lifecycle and affordable housing in Carver than we do today. I think that setting this as a zoning ordinance sets the, the stage for developers to be able to do that. But again, it's a minimum. So if, if there's not a need for it, if, if they don't want to do that, or, I don't know, even an association may overrule that. I think in Carver Bluffs, the association dictated what the setbacks were. That'll, that'll self-regulate. But I want to, I want to be sure that we're attracting developers to build what the market needs today. And I know it's a, I know it's a difference in opinion, I get that.
It sure is, but I, and I agree that we should have housing for all, and that there needs to be more lifecycle housing. But I don't think, looking at this map, those new houses that are going in at 550 to 600,000, is that what we're talking about? So I don't think that's gonna cure that, anyways.
Yeah, but Chris, we talked about in the Housing Action Plan, we made the realization, and we all recited it together, this is before your time, you're lucky, that new housing will not come in as affordable. They're not building $220,000 or $350,000 new homes from scratch. Erin had that really terrific slide that said, this is what land prices cost, this is what infrastructure costs, and this is what you're looking at before you even put, dig a foundation. So I think, you know, we're already doing this as far as the light lot sizes and the use of the PRDs, and I think, kind of to what Joyce said, I think that there's just a straighter path to this, it's simplification. Did you get a chance to opine?
No. So Erin, you might have to, if you can remind me. So the side setbacks, that would be seven and a half feet from the end of the foundation, edge of the foundation to?
So right now, it's seven and a half, foundation wall to foundation wall. But historically, for the PRD in the R2 district, we've been reducing to five on each side or 10 total.
Okay, that's what I wanted to double check, that, so the minimum right now would be about 15 total, but we have given exceptions, okay. Five feet would be the smallest I would be comfortable with, only probably because it's fresh in my mind when we were talking about sidewalk cafes, and just kind of giving that idea of that. Okay, now, where we talk about, depending if it's R1 or R2, but like, for example, if it has to be developable, one, developable acre for three homes, right? Or could it be like, three homes and a little, start, you know, park a little? Or is it absolutely only residential development within that acre?
So, like, an area that could be constructed for a flat tot lot would be included in that acreage. So it's three units per acre, but it would have to include all land that is developable, developable, that is not like a stormwater pond or a street.
So, but not always green space, because it might be some like climbing apparatus, or like a?
Having large areas of green space would drive down your density, because that would be buildable area. So if it's a bluff, you net that out, because we can't build on bluffs. If it's a neighborhood with a soccer field in the middle, that soccer field would drive your density really low, because that is a buildable area.
Like, I'm thinking there's a really small little shelter east of JCP and Spring Creek, where it's right by Ironwood, too, where they have.
Olson Park?
No, it's not an actual park. I think it's just part of the association. What, what do I call it, or, you should have looked it up in the map.
Sounds like it's an HOA.
Yeah, it's an HOA, okay. So how, how did that work into their calculation of density?
So, is it like the townhome area? So the townhomes, you're able to put more units per acre because they're attached? So that density is higher in that area, that they could have additional space that they could use for green spaces.
Okay.
Because if it's, because it was the townhome product, more units per acre, they had more wiggle room.
They had more wiggle room, okay. All right, that helps me. And then the other thing I just wanted to comment is, it's, a lot of this just seems aesthetics too, like, you know, if you're just used to, or like what somebody desires as far as like, how big the lot is, or the home's close or far away. But I do also really think, some of these were, yes, it is smaller lot sizes, but it's brought other really nice amenities too, like a lot more sidewalks and trails. So it's, there's some really good things too. I just, I feel like there's kind of a negative tone, and I just wanted to balance that off.
So, I'm not sure if we've only gotten through lot standards and zone regulations.
I think you did one and two. I'm comfortable with that feedback.
I just want to go back to PRDs. I entirely support figuring out a way that if we were to use it, that we kind of bargained and negotiated for that, and then we wrote something into the, the code that we were able to, to trade up.
Agreed.
Just one final comment. So when the planning commission takes a look at this, I think what would be helpful, especially for us, is that if you do decide in an R2 that you would, that reducing the minimum lot size simplifies things, eliminates the need for a lot of PRDs, if you can provide us some examples of a development that says, hey, if this development went to that, right? The whole development couldn't be the small lots with the five-foot setbacks, because they wouldn't, they would exceed the density, right? If you could provide some examples like that, I think that will help us kind of visualize it and get comfortable with it. Because my guess is that because a lot of these developments are bigger and have a blend of types of housing, only some of it is the smaller lots with the five-foot setbacks, and the other part is larger lots with the seven and a half foot setbacks, my guess.
Right, like Oak Tree is the perfect example of that. So specifically, in those plans and in that development agreement, it's lot and block portions that could have those five yard, five-foot side yard setbacks. So it's just Oak Tree Court, where the rest of the project had to fall at seven and a half. So, we have some protection there that someone couldn't come in and say, oh, I was planning for seven and a half on all of it, but I'm going down to five because I can make more money. We have the ability to have it be a portion of a project, or an entire project, but largely, we've been seeing mixes. Like Timber Creek is not apples to apples, because it's townhomes and single-family, but a similar mix.
Yeah, agreed. Some, some examples like that, I think, would help everybody get their arms around it. Okay, we can go on to ADUs.
Okay, I think we're on, yeah, ADUs now.
Good, take that back, I'm sorry. Okay, so accessory dwelling units, discussing the detached unit. So if someone in their backyard wanted their parents or in-laws to move in, and they built a tiny home in their backyard, that would be considered an accessory dwelling unit? We talked about them a couple of years ago. We called them granny flats at the time. I think that's kind of a sillier name. Yeah, so right now, if you have a unit in your home, it's permitted. So if you did like a basement project, you could have an ADU in your basement. If you had space above your attached garage, it's permitted. So right now, we're thinking about the detached unit. What would that look like? What are some things that you'd like the planning commission to think about as we continue this conversation?
Lots, I can kick it off, but, yeah, the only thing that I was thinking of, I'm not opposed to them, but I would want to make sure, it made me a little bit nervous that they were suitable to live in, in Minnesota, 12 months out of the year. I don't want this to be a place where you store in-laws that you don't care for in the middle of winter. It just, it kind of made me think, bad use of the term. It was just my impulse. So, I just, it made me think, like, would this be something, and I know that years ago, we talked about rental inspections, would this be the thing that would tip us to having to start do rental inspections to make sure that, although as an ADU, would that be something that would be applicable to inspect?
So, yes, you would need a full building permit. It would be a scaled-down version of a full house. So it would need to have basic life safety things, so it would be insulated with heat and plumbing, et cetera.
But as far as like a regular kind of scheduled inspection, nobody's coming to inspect my house regularly, because this is more of a home versus a rental, would that not be permissible probably?
I don't think we would go back to our rental program just for this specifically. I don't know if all of them would necessarily be rentals. I think a lot of them could be for family members that are looking to have some additional space. Frankly, like, there are a couple Airbnbs in town, primarily downtown, because it's in a connected unit. So I get a few calls a year, a lot of people downtown looking to add an accessory dwelling unit. So, I don't know if this is gonna create a rental market boom of ADUs in Carver. At my core, I don't think it will, but I think it will allow some people an opportunity to have a better situation for family members, or to create rental income.
Yeah, I don't hate the idea. I definitely see, you know, sandwich generation, the benefits of it. I think, without, you know, absolutely like deciding something tonight, I would think we would want to check the zoning districts where we have this, in my mind, depending on what it looks like. It might not be appropriate for the historic district. But, that's just kind of where I'm starting off on this.
I am in love with this. You know that I have wanted, no, I am so excited. I absolutely think that adding this to our options here in Carver is a great idea. I love the detached one as well. I think that's fantastic. Again, it's going through the whole building permit process. This is basically a tiny home on the back. I don't see any reason to have to inspect it. We don't inspect people's homes beyond the building and the building requirements, so to me, that is absolutely no different than that. I disagree. We used to have barns in our backyard in, in the olden days here in the historic district, so.
It's your 1850s?
Yep, but we can't have goats in this area, right?
Right, correct.
So I, I don't see any problem with them being in the, in the historic district. I mean, we have, we added our own garage, you know, so we have accessory buildings in ours that we put up since we bought it too. So, I am excited for this, and I hope that this works in our community, and I think it's really a great add-on.
So will this be R1, R2? And, so, the worry I have is, I like the idea, I'm worried about the neighbors that say, well, I didn't, I didn't plan on having a house in my neighbor's backyard and their neighbor's backyard. I didn't sign up for that. It's one thing to have a shed, it's a different thing to have another family or occupant there. So what discussion have we had about the size of the property?
Yeah, so the, the planning commission had a discussion about, you need to have a minimum lot size, so maybe it's those larger lots that fall more inherently in the R1 district. We also have the opportunity to set, increase setbacks for these. So, like the setback for a shed typically is six feet from somebody's property line. Maybe with the ADU discussion, it's 15 feet from your side property line, which then also, you would need to have a pretty large lot to be able to entertain this idea, to have a larger setback. I don't know if that's gonna be the answer, but just getting some feedback from you and then the planning commission. I'll say, generally, they were interested in exploring this idea, so it's something that there's an appetite for. I don't know what it's going to look like at the end of the day, but there are things that we could do to say. You're right, I think a lot of associations would probably say, we're not interested. And the city might approve something, but if your HOA doesn't, you can't build it. I also will say, with these small villa products that we're doing, there's simply not space. You couldn't have a villa and a detached tiny villa on your property. So there are some spaces where I think inherently it works better than it does in some other areas. So, we can think through that.
I think a 15-foot setback is too large. If we're willing to slam houses in five feet from the property line, then I don't think we need to be 15 feet away to put in an ADU.
And we could include things, like to have an accessory dwelling, and you need to have proof of off-street parking. So if you have an extra vehicle on the property, you need to have it stored somewhere off the street. So, all things we can take a look at, but just looking for general feedback of, yes, it's something we want to explore, or no way, we're not interested.
Parking was my next question, but having said that those are the things I'm concerned about, yeah, I think it's absolutely worth investing in, going forward and looking into this. So, I have no objection of that.
I also like the idea to explore it more. I am really curious to know more with the, any other homeowner associations? Or like, did they have more leeway, like, other than just saying yes or no? Like, could they actually also have, you know, it has to be painted this color?
Some do, like the, an example is the Meadows at Spring Creek has a pretty robust homeowners association, so they have a full review of things like sheds and fences. So, we'll get a permit here, we'll approve it at the city, and then oftentimes their HOA will call and say, like, that's not something we can do, so.
Okay.
Jo?
I support looking into it.
Okay.
Alicia, I'll be simple asking for it. Okay, do you have what you need from us?
I do, thank you. I do. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Going to the city manager's report.
Thank you. Just one second here. So a couple of things to share tonight. As we're getting ready for the long-term financial plan, we identified one project that we wanted to put on your radar. So we're planning to do well house rehabilitation for wells one and three. And I've asked Chad to share a little bit of the details of that. But as it relates to the update, what we'd like to do is start preparing plans and specs in 2023. As you can imagine, the best time to do that is when water demand is lower. So think winter, early winter of 2024. And so in order to hit that timeline and have that rehab project done, we wanted to look at having council give, Bolton to make the go-ahead to do plans and specs. So we have that planned for a future agenda. But I asked Chad to, to share a few thoughts on the scope of, of that project.
So well house one and three is located on the north side of Lyons Park. Some of those electrical components are thirty-plus years old, so they're already obsolete. We're really looking at complete electrical upgrades. And one of the kind of triggers was waiting until well five and six was actually producing water, which they are now. Really, we're looking at complete SCADA upgrades, fiber connection, wiring upgrades, and also some piping upgrades. And we just, like Brent said, we wanted to get it completed before summer of 2024, water demands start to increase and with the long lead times on electrical components, some of that stuff would probably get ordered today and show up in fifty weeks. So it, some of those are very long lead times.
Did you say fifty, like nine, zero, like a year from now?
Fifty weeks, yes.
That's what we thought you said. So that, I assume that that requires taking the well offline during construction? That's why we want to do it in the winter?
Construction, yes. Yep.
Any more questions for Chad?
No.
All right.
Second piece is the former Cassaforti or the Carver Connections Task Force is meeting on Wednesday. Also had a meeting with Dan Lannis and Jonathan Nelson. And Bolton Bank has kind of a grant or transportation funding guru named Ashley Hudson. She's pretty highly,
Sounds like you're saying I.
Highly regarded throughout the metro for being a kind of a wizard as it relates to providing or getting good applications submitted for these projects. And so that's really important related to trying to get a trail connection to the Carver Bluffs neighborhood and actually going all the way to Jonathan Carver Parkway, getting, having a off-street trail connection into the downtown. So I'm also looking at a local road improvement program, grant application for that project. So similar to what we got for the Sixth Street West project. So then there's actually another, I would say, two to three other financing possibilities just because of the dynamics of that road and how we took it over from the county. And that section going east, or not, excuse me, going west on Cassaforti or I think I started calling that Main Street is part of the county's regional trail corridor that actually they want to get that all the way up to Waconia. So there's some possibilities there. So, but the task force is, is working. They're going to be getting into some more intricate detail on some concepts on Wednesday. So looking forward to the council seeing their work. I think we have an update planned at your July seventeenth meeting. We're starting our contract negotiations for a collective bargaining agreement tomorrow with our representatives from ASME. Chad, Shell, and Lynn Shutey are joining me on the negotiations team. Probably at some point, I would say later on this summer, we'll ask the council to schedule a closed meeting so that we can go over a contract negotiation, summaries and get some input from the city council. We're allowed to do that. You just have to post a notice for a closed meeting. Park and pedestrian, park and pedestrian underpass security. We talked about this a few meetings ago. Cost came in below what we were anticipating. So Chad's in the midst of securing contracts to do, it's kind of cellular-based technology and solar powered kind of for power. But the cameras in some of the area are high-profile vandalism areas as relates to the two pedestrian underpasses and then in community park and Lyons Park. So hopefully by the end of summer, we should be able to have something up and ready for that. I shared with the council earlier, we had a sign request following the policy that the council established for a parking concern on Kirchi Hill Drive. So approximately from Sixth Street West to High Street. And so Dan Lannis, along with Chad and Chief Trimble, are processing that request. But there, and I'll share the update, but based on your policy, this wouldn't get to the council. But there is a possibility that based on the street width and size of our fire department or fire equipment apparatus, that one side of that street might be par, or sign no parking. I know that's been, at least in my time, has been kind of a struggle with folks that live along that corridor with seasonal parking. But one of the things that we, did this for Bluff Park, Vicki's working on it, but really want to do kind of a deep dive after the season and find out, or take a more, a smaller look at, or bigger look, excuse me, on how we're scheduling these fields. I think in the past, you know, we've given the CCYBSA or Pickers Association, they just said, we're taking these fields, but we really haven't been managing the open space areas. And what's, we might be in a position where we're overscheduling the, these parks based on our available parking facilities. And so we'll want to take that information and kind of reshare it with the council and get your perspectives on what our strategies might be. If, if you're fine with how it is, that's fine, but there might be some strains in parking and just want to make you aware of it and give you an opportunity to, to provide some feedback and direction if you want the dynamic to be different.
Right, can you clarify for me? So we were talking about Sixth Street and parking on one side only?
Kirchi Hill.
Kirchi, okay, sorry. Oh, and Kirchi it is. Okay, thank you. That's all I needed. I was thinking Sixth Street. I'm really confused here.
Yeah, so.
I brought, and I was like, well, we're just in a bike lane. How is that going to work? Thank you.
It would likely be, so the sidewalk on Kirchi is on the south side. So it'd be likely par, no parking on the north side if we met the requirements and that Dan and Aaron Schmidt and Chad are, are looking at along with Chief Trimble. Just wanted to give you a heads up. This is something that you've done on an annual basis and probably new to council member Pershman. But we have an open-range pay system where we establish minimum pay and maximum pay for each one of our graded positions. And we adjust that scale by whatever the consumer price index is, indexes, as it's indicated in the Minneapolis Federal Reserve's CPI calculator. And so that's listed at six percent. And so what that does is it raises the minimum pay for that position and the maximum pay for that position. Doesn't necessarily give somebody that increase unless they're below what would be the minimum pay. But we'll be bringing that to you at your July seventeenth meeting. So I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up since at times that can be a, a topic of community interest. Local emergency operations plan. So this is something, excuse me, we had identified in our last strategic plan. That's kind of one of those hangers-on. We wanted to get through some stuff this year, but we have a group with Chad, Shell, Aaron Smith, Callie Trimble and some of some other folks. We're working with a consultant that's going to develop a, what we're calling a local emergency operations plan. So we have a really big plan that's in place with the, with Carver County. What we want to do is kind of localize that for local contacts as it relates to tornadoes, flood events, communications. Think of workflow, think of who's responsible for certain areas so that it's less driven by the staff that we have in these seats today and more driven by, you know, this is the public services director's role, this is the mayor's role, this is the council's role. Talked to council member Pershman about this just briefly this afternoon. Like, you know, if we had, you know, a natural disaster, you know, let's say a tornado, like, you know, and the council got approached by Kira Levin, like, you know, what would be the protocol? What should, you know, you be expected to say? How should you triage questions? You know, how do we ramp up building inspections to take on an analysis of, you know, structures that might be impacted? Do we have garbage service lined up? Would we take care of stuff that's pushed into the street? Just developing all those things kind of local. The big plan that the county has, has elements of it, but it's, you know, it's talking about two kind of old-school paper binders worth of information. And we want to give, you know, something that's a little bit more bite-sized so we can take it and say, okay, this is what our plan is, even if Brent's out of town or, I don't know why I'm referring to myself in the third person. If I'm out of town or Chad's out of town, or the fire chief's out of town. We're not wondering, well, who's going to do what? It's all built into this plan and it hopefully gives you a better sense of, of confidence that things are handled. I know last year there was a concern, like, we're going to have strong winds and we kind of built that as we went. But it wasn't something that was intuitive, like the council knew what we were going to do. We just kind of shared, like, this is our plan for tonight. And we still might do that, but we want to have a foundation in that plan. Just reminding the council that we're going to be closed on Monday, next Monday and Tuesday, July third and fourth. And so there'll be no council meeting on the third. The next time you meet is the seventeenth. And then bittersweet, happy for Brenda Efta that she's going to be enjoying retirement, but it's going to be sad to see her go. She's, I would say, pretty close to an institution here. A lot, she has a lot of interaction with community residents on a day-to-day basis and we owe a lot to her and she's going to be missed. She's going to be retiring at the end of November, I believe. So just wanted to be one of the first to say thank you to Brenda and we'll get her in front of the council here to give her a good send-off. But we're going to be starting to do some transition work on looking at position descriptions, not just automatically filling the position as we have, but all the department heads and Brenda Good and I met this afternoon and started going through scenarios. As you know, Kathy Elke has announced her retirement for next July. And so rather than just kind of filling, backfilling in what we have, I think this is a good opportunity to say, okay, you know, Brenda Good had a great analogy of like, we have all this stuff in a box and if you threw it up and it fell out, like, how would you put it back in? And so we're kind of using that concept of saying, okay, what are our needs and how do we organize this? And then what positions do we need to be successful? So.
That's a Brett Merrick caliber analogy. Well done.
It would take me like five or six more analogies to get to the one that she got. But headline is Brenda Efta, job well done, looking forward to recognizing her as she wraps up her career with the city. So happy to answer any questions on any of these items or other items that you're looking for an update on.
Any questions for Brent on these?
No.
Okay, I'm going to move to council requests. So last week, we had the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference in Duluth. It was a good time had by all. One of the breakout sessions was titled something like, so you didn't get into local government to regulate cannabis, did you? Or something like that, wasn't it?
Yes, uh, yes.
Or you didn't think you'd be, you didn't think you'd be regulating cannabis or whatever. But one of the biggest takeaways from that, and I hope you'll keep me honest, was that we need to by August first, need to come up with an ordinance if we do not want people smoking weed on the streets and in public places in our community parks, et cetera. That makes it a petty misdemeanor to do so. I would like to move forward down that path, but I wanted to bring it up with council. You look like you're, have questions.
I, so I'm trying to remember Dave's eloquent summary of what we believe that the new law is pertaining to. And I didn't recall that it was legal to do that.
I don't know that I remember that either, but I certainly can tell you that the lobbyists from the League of Minnesota Cities were very clear about this.
Okay.
So it, it isn't, but there's really no way to enforce it unless the local.
It's about enforcement.
It's about enforcement. So it would create, it would create an ordinance provision that makes it a petty misdemeanor, which isn't a crime, but it's technically a code violation that you could get fined for. Other petty misdemeanors are parking violations or, you know, low, low-level things that are against the law that is not under state law considered a crime. So it doesn't go on your criminal record or anything like that. But it would create a situation where you'd have to contact the court and pay a monetary fine to the city and the court.
Okay, so the enforcement piece wasn't part of the state legislature?
Correct. Yep. So.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just.
I'm there now. Okay.
Yeah, so beginning on August first, that's when cities can have those ordinances in place for being able to cite somebody for that. So right, right now, if somebody, if you didn't have that ordinance in place, if somebody was doing it, law enforcement couldn't really do much about it. They couldn't issue the person a citation.
They could just say, this is illegal, stop doing it, and that's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, you know, most cities are kind of just adding a pretty short and simple provision to their police power section of their city code to make this a petty misdemeanor, now that you can do that. And if that's something the council wants, we're happy to bring it.
Okay, just from a perspective, point, is there a similar petty misdemeanor for drinking alcohol on the street?
That's a misdemeanor.
That's a misdemeanor. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Can we, can you say it again? Where, where this covers? So it's, I mean, is parks, streets, what were?
Public places.
All public places is what you're talking about?
Yep.
Lobby of City Hall.
How about, where does this go with, like, let's say, private businesses or something like that?
There are allowed uses in your summary, right?
Yeah, that, it has nothing to do with privately-owned residence. I mean, it doesn't mean you can use it, but the way this ordinance would be written is just to prohibit it from streets, sidewalks, parks.
Okay.
That kind of thing.
I'm just saying, like, if, I own the ABC gas station and, but I own it. So does this cover that?
There's already the Clean Indoor Air Act, so you can't smoke.
Okay, so there you go.
We talked about that twice now tonight.
Yeah.
So, so there's already a way for that to be.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yep.
I have a question. And I'm thinking back about the presentation. I watched it and the materials. There's a March first deadline. Is that for, if we were to put such an ordinance in, it has to be by then? And I think it was March first of 2025.
Yes, so that is the date that the law that was passed last year allowing edible cannabinoid products sunsets. And so that's the date where you can't sell those products under that statute that was drafted last year and approved last year. But then when the new state law that just will soon take effect, when that actually, that's soon going to transition everything under the State Office of Cannabis Management. Why they picked March first, 2025, I think it's because they expect the state office to be up and running and issuing licenses by then. That's still about a year and a half out, a little more than that even. But I think they just made sure to give themselves enough time to make sure that that was, that it's going to be allowed until the state.
I'm going to need a chart with some strings.
Okay, wait, just rilling us back though to petty misdemeanor for smoking in public.
So I support, right, having an enforcement ordinance if that's what the right path is, just so that we have some kind of enforcement around the public places since that's covered in this deal. Yeah. Makes sense to me.
All right.
I, I need to think about it. Yeah, I just don't know enough.
Chrissy?
So when we were talking about, like, the liquor, so when we were talking about parks, because I know you asked about parks, do I, I believe it was you. So you can have alcoholic beverages in parks, yes?
Yes.
Okay, so, but not weed if this goes through, right? Pot, marijuana, can we not, maybe not call it? So, because I'm just kind of confused, because you were talking about parks and everything and then you asked the question of whether you could have alcohol, right?
On the street.
On the street.
That was my analogy. I didn't say parks. I said streets, just walking on the street, but that's a misdemeanor. So I was kind of trying to align what Courtney is proposing with existing alcohol in a public space, like a street.
So as a petty misdemeanor, this would be like a parking ticket? I'm fine.
Yeah, I support this, too. I think we have to act relatively quickly. I'm not wrong. It'll be legal to consume marijuana August first. You can't buy it. Kind of like you can go buy fireworks in Wisconsin, you just can't use them here. But August first is the deadline, so we don't have much time to act on this.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can bring something to the, to the one meeting in July. We have plenty of time to do that. But it's not like if you don't have it in place by August first, you can't still.
Or do it.
Approve it, yeah. I mean, that's just, I think that creates then no, you know, opening for people to, to be able to do it without getting a, you know, being subject to that rule, so.
All right. Any other council requests? No. Do not? Okay. Updates? Eric, do you want to go first? Eric, do you want to go first?
Well, so I did not attend the Planning Commission meeting, but I did attend the League of Minnesota Cities event with Courtney and Brenda, Vicki and Lynn. There were some useful breakout sessions. The, the exact title was, you probably didn't get into local government to regulate cannabis. And that happened to be all standing room. That was the most popular attended breakout session. As Brent mentioned, we talked about communications plans, emergency communication and managing the media. I think that's a good idea that we come up with a strategy there. One other breakout session too, we talked about just kind of managing dissent and managing organized dissent from people outside of our community versus how we respond to concerned residents. And I think it's worth, you know, some further discussion there as well. So a lot of ideas shared, certainly worth attending. It'll come around next year and if you've been there before, I'd still recommend that you go back. That's it.
Chrissy?
Do we know when Sixth Street is going to be striped?
It's, it's half.
It did? Is it half striped? Okay. It wasn't the last time it went up, so.
Yeah, they striped the center lane today and they'll do the bike lanes tomorrow, I think.
Okay.
Some, some of the crosswalks might fall into Wednesday, but yeah. All the long lines should be done by tomorrow. They had some issues today. They got off too late there with the wet pavement and that kind of stuff. But yeah, by the middle of the week, it should be looking really nice out there.
All right. Sounds good. County Road 11, the median, who is responsible for the grasses, the dead trees?
Well, Public Services Department is kind of maintaining that area. The, the dead trees are, we're waiting till the end of the warranty period just to, to see kind of where everything sits. So then by this fall, because we have a two-year warranty on those trees, they'll be removed and replaced.
Okay. If, the meetings were looking a little bit rough, when I thought, when I went by, but have they been taken care of since?
They were, they were mowed recently.
Okay.
Last week, yeah.
Okay.
And that is that natural fir reg grass, so it's a three- to five-year establishment period.
Okay.
So we mow them when they get up to about eight to 12 inches tall. We mow them down to five.
Okay.
And then it's maybe three to five weeks, kind of depending on rain.
Okay. Which we have had none until now, until it's time to start striping the streets, right? I have one more thing. So I know that the Lions have donated a bench for up at Lyons Park. I believe the concrete pad was poured up there. What's our timeline for getting that bench in? I know we've donated it a little while ago.
It was installed right after the snow was gone, so probably in late April.
What was installed?
The bench.
The bench was installed?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, then, at Lyons Park. Okay. They keep telling me that it's not, so I will have to go take a picture and send it to the Lions and let them know it's there. Okay. Thank you.
Very nice to the shelter.
Okay.
So it's not visible from the park.
Maybe they're just driving to take a peek. Okay, thank you for that.
Any updates?
That's all.
Okay. Lori?
No updates are announced.
Joy?
The only question I had is in the monthly reports, the Carver Station numbers for May were the highest we've seen since the pandemic started. And I wondered what happened in May? Do we know, I assume bus schedules aren't changing. It just happened. Okay. Okay. That was my question. Yeah, I was like, okay. And so, no.
Wait.
Yes.
Since I had to go first, I was hoping I'd go last.
Oh.
From the, from the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, one other really important thing that happened is our mayor, Courtney Johnson, was appointed to a three-year term as a board member for the League of Minnesota Cities.
I'm really excited. I interviewed and was elected into it. So there were three three-year terms, one two-year term and one one-year term. So lots of turnover in the board, as well as the league now has a new executive director, Luke. So I thought it was a good time to join. And Brent has previously served on the board and just always speaks super, super, super highly of it. So it's a great organization. Thank you for that. Let's see, for me, in the last, well, let's see, three weeks since we've met, we had our first Parks Advisory Group meeting. It was a really, really good group. We got to walk through the park and see how it's coming along. The park is not officially open yet, but boy is that.
You're speaking of Ironwood?
Um, yes.
Okay.
But boy, is that skate park really, really popular. Let's see, we had a Carver County Mayor's meeting a couple of weeks ago. I went to the last Planning Commission meeting where they talked about a bunch of stuff, but Hometown Bank was the most notable that I'm thinking of, lots of other stuff. I joked with the Planning Commission that I showed up at their meeting where they weren't going through our planning ordinances because I've understood that those are long and detailed meetings. This one was pretty long too. We had a Carver Business Alliance meeting in the last couple of weeks. And then the conference, which was in Duluth. And I echo Eric's statements that it's always really good. The programming is really good. The breakout sessions are terrific. But there's also like an untangible benefit of just having lunch next to somebody from a community in Minnesota that you wouldn't be able to point out on the map, but talk about your combined pain points and solutions and what you're doing. So just really good networking and learning from our peers there. So it's going to be in Rochester next month. It's always in mid to late June. So I'm sure they have their website, the dates on the website already. So that is it for me. So unless there's anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by council member Pershman.
I'll second.
Second by council member McKnight. All those in favor say aye.
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 Close, same sign. Motion passes. Good evening.